We are on the record. Thank you, everyone. This is a caucus of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Monday, the 23rd day of May. I've just silenced my phone at 5:34 PM. We had a scheduled 5:30 start. At 5:34, we have Councilperson Gajewski, Bajiano, Yoon, Osborne, Coleman, Rivera, Waterman, and we're missing the Council President. Take us away, Acting Council President.
The first one is the ordinance A?
10A.
No, 3A, yeah. I was like 10. Yeah. So this is the first reading of an ordinance to create a new lease with an adopt-a-lot that was previously under an individual. Now it is, now that the lease is up as per the ordinance, there's a, this lease is in front of you for the Jersey City debutante cotillion group of girls to adopt the lot at 81 Garfield Avenue. So get more youth involved in the growing process. The next is my resolutions. No questions?
No.
Okay, so the first resolution is 10Y? No, 10X, sorry. It's a...
Authorizing HHS to accept a gift from the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute we use for efforts towards community health programming.
So I'm not sure who got a chance to see the update last week. Jersey City is part of a consortium with the New Jersey Healthcare Institute, and the New Jersey Healthcare Institute won an award of $550,000 to do community health education in Jersey City, Trenton, and Hunterdon County. And so the Health Department and Jersey City Medical Center are partners in that programming from the United Health Foundation. And this is the first installment to kind of get us started with incentives for the summer. So this first gift is small, it's only 6,800, but we'll be continuing to work out marketing, community health education, and software that the actual Healthcare Quality Institute would be going into partnership on. This is a three-year grant, and this is the beginning of that three-year process. Z is the resolution. Okay, questions? The first one was X. Now Z, more money. It's a resolution of the Municipal Council to accept funds from the Food and Security Nutrition Incentive Grant Program. This program?
10Z.
10Z. This program is run by the national organization Wholesome Wave. It's part of a federal food insecurity nutrition incentive program. This is the money I talked about briefly in the budget hearing that allows us to double food stamp purchases at farmers' markets for fruits and vegetables for people that use their SNAP benefits cards. So that's, again, it's, this is the second year of a three-year grant. The, this is purely incentive money. Once we use it, they just renegotiate with us and provide us more if we use it all. And this also is about, it's, this is $6,000. $6,000. So it's 6,000 extra dollars for food stamp recipients to use in the farmer's market. No, this is anyone that uses their food stamp card. They swipe it at a, at the actual farmer's market, and up, you get up to $10 each visit to the farmer's market. They give you tokens specific to, we have three markets currently operating, Riverview Farmer's Market, Lincoln Park, and Arlington Park are the ones that this year we're hoping to grow into Leonard Gordon Park with the swiping program, along with Hamilton Park. We're talking to Grove Street right now, see how they can accommodate the program. And then Z7?
That's authorizing, it's an annual event authorizing the Hudson Regional Health Commission to enforce the local health ordinance pursuant to the County Environmental Health Act.
So this is some of the things that we don't cover, that's sort of not under our jurisdiction as a city, things like the quality air control, sort of money, the environmental health hazards we call in the county. They support us when we go out on some task force visits or calls related to noise pollution and things like the mosquito efforts that will roll out during the summer for Zika prevention. So we pay them a lump sum annually. They bill us quarterly, and it's the, I mean, pretty standard relationship that we have with the county to cover cost. And so it's like 98,000 or something?
This is a personal?
No, this is, this is an annual event. This is, I'm gonna say way before I got here, there...
My whole career.
Yeah.
Every, yes.
There's things that the city just can't do according to the state, and so we kind of provide dollars and a shared service with the Hudson County. Nothing else? Thank you.
10B.
10B.
Okay, 10B. Allow me, I'm sorry. It's authorizing the circulation of a preliminary official statement and final official statement in connection with the sale of the city's bond anticipation notes in the amount of $7,850,000 federally taxable and approving a continuing disclosure certificate with respect to said notes of the city and authorizing and ratifying other actions in connection therewith.
This is the first time you're seeing a resolution like this. It has to do with new SEC disclosure rules and the MCDC initiative, Municipal Continuing Disclosure Cooperation Initiative. Basically, it informs the council that the city will be issuing a preliminary official statement, an official statement, and a continuing disclosure document. We do this all the time. It's just part of the new rules that I have to formally do it in a resolution to show the council that we're doing this. Yes?
Can you explain the sale of?
Right, these are notes that we sold that were initially issued back in 2010, they're bond anticipation notes that we roll every year. Every year, we roll them, and we have the option to turn them into bonds, permanent financing, but the way that the market's been in the note market, the interest rate is so low, it's better to just keep them in notes and roll them every year. That's it? Thank you.
No, it said Marvin Housing Authority. I don't know. Everybody has a turn.
Did you have any items or no?
It's on the card.
Yes.
Well, come with him. So we can roll, right? Come with him. So we'll take your name now.
Got all the projects?
Uh huh. So which one are you gonna start with?
I'm gonna start in order.
He has a flurry of them. All consecutively listed, starting with R. These are all R, S, T, U, and V, and W. All authorize affordable housing trust fund contracts. First, R with the Housing Authority for 561 Montgomery Street.
Okay, so as you guys all know, I'm the chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee. Can you guys hear me? I feel, I hear an echo. I'm the chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee. What you have before you are resolutions to execute a contract so that we can allow, what was that?
To execute what?
Contracts. Yep, so that we can go into contracts so that we can start creating and developing affordable housing trust fund dollars. And to remind you, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee is an advisory committee. Both our council members, Coleman and Waterman, are on the review committee. So what we did this time around is that we reviewed, it may seem like a lot of applications, but we reviewed ideally two rounds in this initial installment for this fiscal year. So ideally, in the memo that I sent out, we reviewed 19 applications or recommending seven projects, and I do have our partners here today in order to discuss their project individually, one by one. So I'll go through the letters, and then if you guys have any questions to, ideally in regards to wanting to know a little specific about the projects, we can go into that as well. So the first resolution is R. So the, now we can bring up Marvin and his team, and the first project is execute a contract with the Housing Authority for an agency for project at 561 Montgomery Street. So?
Any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
That is 524 Torzetto NJ LLC for 524, 530 Ocean Avenue.
So again, this project is, we're recommending for the development of a housing project in Ward F. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund amount is about 1.5 to be able to do the project. Any questions that you may have? I do have our partners here today, also Deborah and Sandra as well, in regards to...
Can you hear this on 524?
524, 530.
This is questioning the city, this part is questioning the city in JCRA land, and they want an RFP, they responded to an RFP.
Is this a veterans' housing that's coming on?
This is the second set of veterans' housing, and it's, and just so you know, this is where the old, we were originally doing the oil change place.
Oh, yes, okay.
So this is much better than the oil change place.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah.
They have 20 units, right?
Yes.
Okay, 20 units, but only two units will be for the veterans' housing?
The veterans' housing?
So only 10%?
So it's nine affordable units? Right, so understand that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is for affordable housing, right? So ideally, when you look at the project size and scope, right, it's nine, it's 20 units total, but nine units of affordable housing. Correct, and so...
Nine units, so veterans. But let me ask this one. Why 65% for our veterans' housing, income, what is that?
Is that it?
No, what it means, two-bedroom at the 65% for veterans' housing?
65% AMI.
AMI, yeah.
They're missing AMI.
Oh, it's just missing AMI? All right, well, yeah. So now, 65% AMI, why is that 50, what's 30 to 50? Is there any reason?
We use HUD guidelines for defining when we're trying to hit the targets of different affordabilities. So 65% AMI is what HUD defines as, as the, as a target group we're trying to get.
So we'll go by initiative, we wrote up the RFP, that's what was published.
Hudson County, how many homeless as a veterans' homeless?
How many veterans homeless? I mean, ideally, if you look at the point in time count that we did last year with those numbers, I think we've identified over 100 or so veterans that are, that are homeless. We're still working on this year's point in time count. And as a reminder, I don't know if you guys have gotten information yet, we're doing a youth point in time count to count the youth this June. So those efforts are being continued in regards to trying to identify the actual true aggregate, but then also I wanna say that this is an initiative from Washington, it's coming from the White House. Sure.
When you say 65% AMI, how many actually homeless veterans qualify for these units?
That is to be determined, right? So that's to be determined in regards to the aggregate of what we're collecting. You have to understand that when you're working with the homeless population, the veteran population, to be able to document income is very hard, right? So what we're trying to do with our supportive agencies is to be able to identify that so that we can move that. So what we did in January, what I did with me and my team and the county, is that we were out in the streets trying to count the homeless and trying to get those aggregate of numbers so that we can be accurate. So even thus still, that you see this project as a veterans' project, it's an affordable housing project. The fact that...
I understand what you're saying, Seth. There's a need for veterans' housing, and we agree, which is why we've announced several projects particularly focused on veterans' housing. I think we have some 60 units under consideration, and we're committed as an administration to eradicating veteran homelessness. I'm glad you support it, and we look forward to seeing your support when those projects come before this body.
The one on Ocean, how many units is that?
The one on Ocean, across from, yeah, Dave, I'm asking you.
That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one? Okay.
The next one, so we're okay with that? The next one.
That is for...
Operation...
I'm sorry? That's the redevelopment agency for 665 Ocean, that's T. We're up to T, right?
Yes.
So, you know what I'm saying, is that compared with a dollar amount, we're sharing, the other project is a more affordable housing unit, but they get only $2 million. This one is only getting nine affordable housing units, but they get the 1.5 million. So how, where, any, some kind of rules you apply for this one? I couldn't understand. Because the other one, the larger housing units, they only get $2 million, but this one is only nine, but they get the, what do they call? 1.5 million. And the other one, they should 30 to 50 AMI, you know, more like affordable building, but this one is 30 to 65, you know? The 15% can be big difference, but they get monthly, it's by units, by AMI, it seems uncomfortable.
I think that's all veterans too, isn't it?
The one to 665.
So what is the reason? Explain to us why this unit has to get 1.5 million? Tell me.
So, okay, so the first project that we were speaking on was a project that is acquisition and new construction, right? This other project is also in regards to a rehab project, different costs. When you are putting, comparing projects, it's like apples to oranges. When you develop and you try to put together the best spending plan for each particular project, you have to look at everyone's capital stack, right? You have to look at and assessing all the numbers. So in regards to making these projects successful, when we reviewed this, this particular application, we stacked it up against all others in the competitive aspect. So, yeah, you're right, the numbers, when you ask in regards to why is this project 1.5 and this one is at a million, in order for make this project work, their needs are different, in order to make this project work, their needs are different.
And their requests are different.
And their requests are different. So I can't sit here and say in regards to when you wanna go buy a home, and you wanna go buy a home, those needs are different. If he's gonna build a house, his project costs are gonna be different. If you wanna rehab and refinance your house, it's gonna be a different kind of aspect. And so you also...
Having a building that's in need of rehab, getting a rehab, so there's a multiplier to the benefit.
So those are ideally...
Some issues with the project that the...
In regards to the issues to the project, I mean, I do have our project sponsors here with us that can speak. I don't know if Dave, you wanna come up here? You're okay?
Also, the target that we're looking at, the eight units of veterans' housing, literally the AMI could literally be 0%. There is the definite possibility that all eight veterans that move into that building will have no income, and this is permanent housing for homeless veterans, so the needs are completely different, and so that changes what we have to put into the building, it changes our, it literally changes how we're building out our social workspaces, including the AFL-CIOs coming in to work with us. So there are a variety of different, there are a variety of different things coming together, and that's why I...
That's what makes you good. You have a lot of...
Actually, that's why, you know, our, you know, our other council members are on the committee. We do some review, and we go back and forth, and it's not, we try to meet and update as much as we do. And understand that these are two rounds. So last year, August, we put out an RFP, it closed in December. This year, January, we put out another RFP, it closed, I'm gonna say maybe sometime in mid-March. So what you're seeing right now, it seems like a lot of dollars being spent, but it's actually two rounds of funding that are being consolidated together. So I try to...
Yeah, so in the meantime, why you... No, we're hoping that this one, and wanna be presumptuous, but we've been putting out operating expenses to continue the project forward, because this particular project that I'm working on will literally be completed by the end of July, and we hope to have veterans in it by September, so, but it's costing the agency a lot of money, and so we need, you know, and operating is something we should be spending on capital.
We wanna make sure they have no...
That's what we're looking for. All right?
Next one is Garden State Episcopal CDC for 118, 134 Summit Avenue.
Have any questions on this particular project? Our project sponsor here, partner.
Any questions?
So now, just make sure that eight units for veterans, up to 80% AMI. In other words, 20, 30, 40% AMI is qualified there, right? Okay.
This is not veterans' housing?
No, this one is not.
The Ford portal, nope.
Where is that? Because I have so many things going on.
Sure.
Is that for that?
Yes, 118.
On Summit, our historical housing, is it?
Yeah, that, our project is a 47-unit market, affordable. It's not veterans' housing.
But that's not, is that the historical church?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the historical St. John's church?
The St. John's Episcopal, yeah.
Yes, that's, okay.
V is Community Loan Fund of NJ for 301-305 Whiten Street.
Any questions?
Going on to W, the Michaels Development Company, 1 LP for 296 Woodward Street. That would be W.
What is this, the inlet housing that's coming?
On Montgomery Street, I mean, the, around that area, is that what this is? Or is this the completion of the...
Of Lafayette.
Of Lafayette, okay.
Final phase.
This is the final phase?
Yes, okay.
Anything else? That's it.
So now, after pay all this, how much balance we have for the Housing Trust Fund then?
The balance will be about 1.5 million. But I will tell you that we, we have about an aggregate of coming in, about another four to five million by the next round. It's just how it's collected and the taxes are assessed and when it's going on. I am working with the tax department to get an assessment. I will also say that the city just appeared in front of the Board of Adjustments with 311 Washington, and we will be receiving about approximately four to five million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and then I just got wind of another 1.5 million or 1.1, I think it was, and then I knew about 55 COLA funds that are also being identified for Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I mean, also being identified to build affordable housing.
So on the 30 million, something like that?
Yeah, approximately, yep, so...
Approximately that's the amount. After we pay all this?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I tell him to come sign his paper, so we can move.
No, 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 no. Oh, G, G, 3G. 3G, Robert. Leave in silence, please.
Go on, go on.
3G, we're doing with Mr. Wenger. That's amendments to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. 3G.
Yes, this is a joint request from the JCRA and planning, so I'll stick here too, or I'll stand here.
So there have been many redevelopment efforts in Journal Square over the decades. The most recent redevelopment effort is the current Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan, but prior to that, there had been a series of redevelopment efforts over the decades, and several properties had been declared in need of redevelopment. The current 2060 plan is silent on the issue of redevelopment. It's a rehabilitation area, so there was no condemnation of property that was contemplated in the current version of the plan. But there were properties that were declared in need of redevelopment prior to the 2060 plan. And so what this amendment does, it simply clarifies within the current plan the fact that these properties are still in need of redevelopment and still have that legal status, and that's...
Yeah, and if I could add to that, the agency picked up on this when I reviewed the Journal Square 2060 plan and looked through the history and realized that the area, there's an acquisition map that you guys, that will be included, that was left out. It was part of the Journal Square redevelopment plan, and it identified pockets of areas that had been found to be in blighted conditions and were in need of, declared in need of redevelopment and were subject to condemnation. That map should have been carried over when the Journal Square 2060 plan created the rehabilitation overlay and increased the boundaries of the redevelopment area. It was not included, and that was, that was simply an oversight. So we're just trying to put back in the original map with the original properties. We're not adding anything, we're not changing anything, we're not declaring anything, we're just asking you to clarify that the old plan is, is still part of the new plan, which was always the intent of the city, and that will enable us as we go forward, and we have, you'll see that there will be projects coming before you in the future, that that clarification is necessary in order for you to properly evaluate the merits of those projects.
But it is just a clarification.
Yeah, it's nothing is being done.
They are still in need of redevelopment today, despite the fact that the current 2060 version of the plan...
It wasn't changed or did the impact? It's gonna create enormous confusion, that would be the impact. And we don't wanna have a redevelopment plan that has ambiguity or is unclear or, as a matter of law, neglected to embrace the prior areas declared in need of redevelopment. When a council declares an area in need of redevelopment, that's almost like a judicial finding, and it can't be disturbed until future findings are made. So we want to just make sure that that is clear in the current plan, that those findings are still intact.
Should you not argue that by being removed, that is a new finding?
It wasn't removed. It was just, it was, it was an oversight or a neglect not to include the map, but there was never, it was never removed by an act of the council.
Mr. Donnelly, right? No before.
Okay.
Thomas?
Yes, that was G, 3G. Tanya, is 3D, right?
Okay, I don't know the letters. I'm sorry.
You're here for which?
3D, E, and F, I think.
They don't have an agenda. Morris Canal, 9th and Brunswick, and the R1.
D, E, and F. I'm sorry? She's here for D, E, and F, 3D, 3E, 3F.
Okay, we'll do D first.
I mean, it's like a joke.
Yes, what is the reason?
It's like a joke.
Yeah, what is the reason, continued change?
Let us find it, Michael. Let us find it. In fairness, in order to understand this amendment, I had to dig out files from 1998 because I've, I don't normally work with redevelopment plans. So I needed to understand how a zone could wind up on a map and never have any standards. And it wasn't originally on the map, it was always just R. And then at some point, I believe in 2002, the R2 was there, and I looked at the transcript for a planning board, and at the time, the planner had a whole testament... for a planning board and at the time, the planner had a whole testimony with standards, um, but they were also proposing the standards for Whitlock Courtage. And so it seems that the standards for the R2 got lost in the sauce and Whitlock Courtage went on, but there were never standards for the R2. So this, right here, is to kind of amend that, which is actually just to give this zone, if you have your map, there are only two little guys up here, the R2, the standards, but it also, through an act that was formally, uh, done by council, incorporates the little park that's next to it. So it, uh, allows any bonus, uh, to the lot that's right next to it to be improved to that, um, little park that's right by Corneliusson.
That's a good thing, that's a nice project, you, you, okay, it's a nice project, I just wanted to know.
They, they refer it as Bergen Hill Park, it's a tri, Bergen Hill Park, it's a triangular lot that's like right on the corner that slopes down.
That community benefit is that they're going to repair and make that park that's a lot right now, make it a real park, right? Okay.
Previous amendment, they added that and then these standards actually help enforce the improvement and also give the standards for the R2 zone.
You're the street?
Yes.
Okay. So-
Uh, the Eighth and Brunswick is, is very simple. It is just adding, uh, medical services and financial services on the ground floor basement level as a permitted use. Probably because they were not enumerated as such, they had to be added specifically.
The R, R1 and 2 family housing district.
This one is a little bit more complicated. Um, first, I, uh, want to explain the R1 side yard issue, which is that currently the ordinance is written that if your neighbor is on the zero lot line, you also have to build to the zero lot line, which is requi, uh, right up against the property. You have to, you have to go right next to them. And so there have been a number of issues and we've had a number of variances and developers come to us with concerns about connecting to the party wall, um, light and air not being able to provide windows. So we modified it to say that if they wanted to have a setback of the two or the three feet, they could in order to provide that light and air. What we did also add was that they have to have, um, a fence or a gate that actually kind of continues that, uh, street front that we thought was important.
Do different things or whatever, right?
There'll be a little gate on it. That's really all that this is. Uh, right now, it requires them to go to zero, we're just allowing them to step back the two or the three, one, to allow for the windows or light and air. That's, that's really all it is. The other one is much more interesting. Jersey City is a much older city, um, and, uh, most of, uh, our zoning and our lands and our lots have occurred before zoning even existed. So the size of our lots and all the way that they were sold and built and created are completely irregular. Um, whereas unlike in other municipalities, a twenty-five by a hundred lot of a whole area, you're more likely to see. Municipalities throughout the state have been enacting this grandfathered lock clause, um, and that's exactly what we're doing in the R1, which says that if your lot is undersized, we're not going to, um, charge you, uh, variance for it. We're not gonna make you proofs that you can either A, acquire your lot next door or, um, why you need relief from it. And we also, within that, is that if you are not triggering any other variances, that you can build as of right. Today, you can't do that. If your lot is undersized, even if you're, even if you're doing everything else right, you still have to go to the zoning board, you still have to wait three months, and more than likely, it's a one or two family project. That's all I have.
I'm here for 3C.
3C.
This is, um, the ordinance amending the Scattersite Redevelopment Plan. Uh, this was a study that was previously approved by this council, um, declaring four properties in area in need of redevelopment. Uh, the council did declare these areas in need of redevelopment. This ordinance would amend the Scattersite Redevelopment Plan to add these four properties to, um, the list, the acquisition list included in that plan. There is also another minor change to the language in the plan, um, unrelated to adding these four properties. Um, previously, there was language in the plan that permitted the use of, um, grandfathered rights for uses, uh, and densities existing at the time of designation. Uh, but there were no bulk standards provided for utilizing these grandfathered rights, so this language, uh, adds those standards.
Actually, can I, can I just, can I just make a statement about the Scattersite too? Because, just, I'll be quick. We're gonna be coming back to you again and again with adding properties to the Scattersite Redevelopment Plan, because a lot of these properties will be part of the Abandoned Property Rehabilitation Act, okay? And so we don't own any of these, so for them to be re, rehabilitated, I've gotta get them into the Scattersite Redevelopment Plan. So this isn't the first time you're gonna be seeing, like, this is gonna happen on an ongoing basis as we qualify properties as development, because I just wanna make that clear.
If the property owners come up with a plan, so what can I include they're gonna deliver, then we can remove that from the list, right?
Yes, when they get, when they get a certificate of, uh, a certificate of occupancy. Not until they get a certificate of occupancy.
The limit of time-
I know exactly who you're talking about. I, I actually said to him, I said to him, "I'm still gonna put you on, I still wanna add you, but I will work with you, I'm a reasonable person, I will work with you, and once you get a plan to me, we'll work with you, and I will go-"
Excuse me, we had a meeting for June, thank you.
And, and I will work with you, and I will, I, I will not move forward with any, any type of condemnation or amendment he'll make until, and, and, until I'm sure that you don't have a plan. Once he has a plan, that person, I will work with him until, until the end. But the point is, I need that hammer, otherwise, he'll let it sit there like he has for the last ten years. That particular person, it's been vacant for ten years.
Good evening, all. Uh, I think I'm Z11, right, Robert?
Z11?
Yes. Z11 is a contract with Aspire Technology Partners for telephone support services under state contract.
Uh, what this is all about, members of the council, is, is that, uh, we have a Cisco voice-over IP telephone system. Uh, it's very modern technology, it's not, uh, simple to manage, and to be honest, I don't have qualified staff in the division to actually handle all of the issues which are occurring with the phone system. So we are hiring an outside vendor who's got experience with this technology. They're going to monitor the systems twenty-four by seven, and they're going to make sure that all of our PBXs, which are part of the phone system, have the most upgraded software, most upgraded hardware, uh, and it's gonna take a lot of weight off IT staff who don't really have the training to actually manage the system.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of a short-term engagement, uh, they're gonna be on for the last seven months of 2016. Uh, if they don't work out, uh, we'll use someone else.
Okay. Diane and Dave? They left? Oh, they covered, okay. Mark, come on, Mark. Come on down, Mark.
Or?
I have, um, Z17, which is this-
Brush Company for Street Sweeper Brushes.
Replaces the sweeper brushes on our street sweepers. We have eighteen street sweepers throughout the city. The wear and tear on the brushes make the, uh, sweepers effective or ineffective, so this is a contract to replace them, um, yes.
The non-sweeper ones that use air, I've been reading up on those and they say that they're a lot better.
I have Rick here, who's my safety officer, CDL trainer, you wanna answer that question?
Yeah, we've tried, those, those vacuum type sweepers work in certain areas.
Yeah.
Uh, but a lot of areas that have a small pitch in the street-
Yeah.
What happens is the vacuum will not get the cover away. Even with the brooms, they just, they kinda hang, uh, they have to be empty more frequently. I, I don't like the dust they make in them, absolutely not. There's a vanity system in them and it does create dust clouds.
Also, the brushes have been, you know, wearing a little, uh, more quicker, more frequently, uh, since we put some of the speed humps in. I'm working with Joe Cunha, the idea is to eliminate the hump to the curb, so our sweepers won't discharge some of the dirt. They are dusty, we did get approvals for two new sweepers, capital monies, we're in the process of purchasing them.
I know that's been an ongoing feedback, and I know they try to, in parameters, but whatever the speed they're doing, even if it's in with operating parameters for the vehicle, I, I'd like to see them slowed down, for a bunch of reasons, safety, but also effectiveness.
Thrown out the bucket, one.
All the sweepers we, we use specifically just on Tunnelley Avenue and those other areas where we don't wanna, you know, uh, use the, the newer sweepers or with the newer brushes on, but, uh, correct, new sweepers, new brushes, do correct that.
I just wanna ask you a question on record. I've had a committee person from, uh, Randolph Avenue area and Clerk Street area to contact you. I've almost had two deaths on Clerk Street because it's just like Arlington Avenue, and if you ride over Arlington Avenue, you'll see there's a speed bump, there's a curve because the block goes like this, and at night, if you're driving, you can't see the car coming on. We've brought you paperwork, we've given you police reports, his name is Jermaine Robinson, and I want something done to Clerk Street before somebody dies while I'm the council person, I don't want that to happen. All, if you look at Arlington Avenue, you will see there's a speed bump here, 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 and there's those curved things that light up to let you know that there's getting ready to be a curve because I almost got knocked going around Arlington, that's the reason they put them up real quick, they didn't want the councilwoman to die, but I don't want anybody to die on Clerk Street, it's just like Arlington. So I'd appreciate if you could do something about that real quick.
Hundred thousand dollars means how many brushes we can purchase?
I mean, that's just the maintenance for replacing brushes, I mean, the brushes are very expensive, um, to replace the entire brush. The brush is about half the size, the size of this table, the width of the, um, um, sweeper. The brushes are in the hundreds to, to purchase one of those brushes. We buy them in bulk, but this is just an open-end contract, so we can get them as we need them. The brush, according to the, the street, they could last months, would you say, Rick?
About two months. We're getting about two months for a main roof. What we're doing, sir, right now, is we're gonna institute retraining, some of us who are driven, is to put less pressure on the brush, wanna experiment that, somebody doing machines have an automatic feature that set that brush pressure down, we've already contacted the manufacturer, maybe loosen that brush, bust brush pressure up because of the imperfections in our streets. What happens is the brush will sense a lower part of the road, push down harder on the roof to get it, what happens is putting more strain on maybe the center of the end of the brush, which will create a delay in the brushing down. So we're instituting a new training program, working with, uh, with LG, to see how we can rectify that, and it should be accessible to the brush.
I now feel like I know, like, a lot about brushes.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Wouldn't it be cheaper to put on, uh, girls with brooms and-
We have, also, but we need to watch the streets, Councilman. I mean, the street sweepers are effective if they're used correctly, especially the new machines.
And, uh, we, we just make sure on the record that, uh, when we have a talk about the budget with the DPW, you know, we have, uh, issues, not a street sweep machine issue, but the litter patrol by hand pick it up. So council general people, they, we believe they wish we increase the budget, so we talk about the more than half million dollars-
Yes.
And the bar very well there, and, uh, he looking for your plans, where you know how you spend that.
I, I've spoken to, I've spoken to the-
Yes, thank you, I got a little for the question.
No, this is B18, which is a contract with Newark Asphalt. And this is for, uh, hot and cold patch for, uh, potholes, um, constantly, it's the same, uh, agreement we had last year, it's in Newark, we pick up hot patch every day and continue to, uh, patch our streets. Right now, we have three pothole trucks out running, uh, I, we take complaints from the Residence Response Center, we take, I take complaints from individual council people on potholes.
Because down Grand Street, coming from the junction down Grand Street to come here, you can only ride one lane. In other words, it's a two-lane where you're supposed to be able to turn on red, but you'd ride your car over that and see what happens.
This is following season, Councilman, we're catching up with our complaints, uh, this is after the winter, we didn't run our hot, pot, uh, pot, pothole repair truck in March, the plant's only opened up in the beginning of April, so now we're actually catching up with the potholes.
Cause Ward F is the pothole central, you know what I'm saying?
Nineteen is a contract renewal, um, for Smithy's Landscape and Irrigation for our various, uh, ball fields and baseball fields and properties that have sprinklers.
Which one is that?
City Hall.
Nineteen, we're going in order.
I got, the sprinkler system is- I got a call from Council, Bodiano, um, we're going there tomorrow. It's just the center where the soccer's being played. No, I have, uh, Z22, which is, um-
That is an agreement- With the Jersey City Employment and Training for Shared Services, with the Employment Training Services-
For Jersey City residents.
For the Workforce Investment Act.
It's a, it's an agreement, um, I have my CDL trainer here with me if there's any questions. Also, we're getting some fire hydrant, uh, painting done through JSEP, and we started that project last Monday, we're putting the Maltese cross in the street, so we can recognize where there are fire hydrants. We also are painting fire hydrants and the red curb in front, and I plan on working on a reflector, so the fire department can see the, uh, fire hydrant, it's, it's a, I'm working with Dennis Newber on this, he has a grant, so it's a co, a cooperative effort with JSEP, DPW, and Fire Prevention to get this done. Instead of them doing them white like they didn't pass, Hoboken has a nice yellow, you can see it a block away, it's fantastic. With the municipal engineer on the color scheme, and he suggested the white, that's where I got the color from. Cars running over and after a couple of months, you can't even see-
With the new brushes.
But in all seriousness, with the CDL training, uh, Rick is going to sign them up for CERT, so we, we can keep investing into our civilian emergency response team, and, uh, I think it's a great project. They're working for us, we're working, uh, helping them get back on their feet with some tra, with some licenses.
Because you take actions, you know, we bring up to council last time, and when you talk budget, they're small, actually, you know, uh, uh, project, but the small, you know, dollars required, but they're actually public safety wise-
I actually, Councilman, reached out to Suez Water and the MUA, they take small projects on for the summer, because there were thirty-eight hundred fire hydrants, how do we make, you know, a difference? Putting a, a, a little band together to, different, every ward will be done, and right now, we did Ocean Avenue, and we're doing Danforth Avenue, and we're gonna continue spreading it to the other wards, Central Avenue will get done, and we'll make sure, we will not, we will not, but it's a, it's a new project, I'm excited about the project, I think it's great. Uh, I have just one more, which is 10Y, uh, which is the Clean Communities Grant Money, it's accepting the, the largest, um, amount of money we've gotten, which is four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Y.
Ten Y.
We're accepting a grant.
Correct, Y. Um, it's for graffiti abatement, uh, enforcement, education, and of course, the litter patrol. This is imperative for me to get the litter patrol hired immediately, so we can put them in the streets, where I have about eighteen litter enforcement, uh, people out there right now, every day in the streets, uh, Monday through Saturday, and I wanna expand that, we, we need to triple that number to really make a difference with the litter. Yes.
So when we see the DPW budget for litter patrol, the budget, so thirty thousand dollars, like, of four different, I mean, divisions, so a hundred twenty thousand dollar plus, you're gonna get your half million dollars almost rent, plus, we're gonna all look at another half million dollars for the, the litter patrol, so now, we're talking about half million dollars here, and another half million dollars here, plus another hundred fifty thousand dollars there, so we're talking about one point one million dollars, which is still one of the-
I didn't count it up to be one point one million, but I like what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay, no, actually, close to.
Close to.
But still, the, the total dollar amount, nine of, compared size of this city, but I hope to make sure they're not only program leading, some more time was a short seasonal, we should be all your other service have to come up with your plans.
Okay, and every time I have a meeting with them, I speak to them about the seasonal employment that I have to do. And some of it has to be seasonal, and they end in October, but I always need litter patrol. November through March, I need it, but I need more now. This is the litter patrol season. I need extra hands in the parks. I have a long weekend coming up, Saturday, Sunday, Memorial Day weekend. I need people in the parks to empty the trash, clean the parks. I can't leave the park Friday and come back on Tuesday. It'll be a mess. I need people working. I need seasonals to take care of this. I have one of my parks guys here right now, Al Lynch, and he knows that this weekend, I put a plan together to have people in the parks. It may cost overtime right now till I get the seasonals, but I can't leave the parks, you know, unattended. And so I do have a plan. I do speak with Bob about it quite often.
Where the litter patrol personnel is placed in the city.
They're mainly on the commercial corridors, mainly. There are on some on Palisades Avenue, West Side Avenue, Ocean Avenue. Some of them I don't have to go to because we have, McGinley Square has a litter patrol, but I'll give you exactly where they are. Right now, I only have eighteen litter patrol, and that's Monday through Saturday. So I want to expand on that, and I'll have a better idea where I need to go. But yes, we do move them around also, councilman.
Most of the, or I don't know, I won't speak for all the sets. The downtown set has their own litter patrol, so we're not doing double.
No, 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 no.
We're very careful where our manpower is.
And we, we moved them as needed.
At the playground, the person.
That, we're waiting for some certifications on the safety. We're hoping to have it open. I'd like to have it open before the weekend. I talked to Brian Weller today about that. We just can't commit to a date until we find out if the certifications are given to us for the playground equipment, safety certifications. Done now. We're in the process of getting them done now. Jen Morell on the opening. We're close, councilman, very close.
We got to add to the street payment. Oh, you're going to do that, right?
Thank you. Anything else?
I have to go. I'd like to make, I'd like to see some. You see this junk here? This is all the junk that's been on my porch in the last week, and everybody's complaining. We have two of the finest lawyers here. Can we do something? Shonda had an ordinance. We dig it back out and have this.
We actually have an issue with the.
It's a shame.
Central Avenue supermarket.
Yeah, something has to be done because it's, the streets are, you talk about your garbage thing.
The envelopes, I took the envelopes off so she could.
You're in front of the camera. Thank you. Yeah, you're right in front of that camera.
Z fifteen, Z sixteens.
I'm sorry?
We're buying paper.
Fifteen is a technical state contract for paper mark, for copy of paper and inter-office envelopes for different offices.
City of Jersey City. We tried to give you opportunity to local vendor to business with City of Jersey City. But every time we use a state contract, I find out not many vendors in Jersey City, they don't have a state contract. So now, we lost opportunity to local vendors, you know? So I understand the citywide, they use the state contract so and so much easier to work, you know, first thing you show them. But meantime, a local vendor special sell the copy paper, what's the big deal, you know what I'm saying?
Has to go to public bid to do that.
Because I'm sure we asked to bid out everything. I remember. Asked us to bid everything out, unless there's a reason not to. So if it's, if it's, if it's not a cost-saving thing, or an emergency thing, or there's no local vendor or no local option, then we should be bidding them out.
We have a long list of items in the state contract. We could do the bid.
Comes back. Can we go with the state?
Now, it slows the whole process down.
That's why City of Jersey City and every department will use the state contract. But meantime, they've only seen a lot of it, copy paper, you know what I'm saying?
The city has gotten a lot better at bidding things out, and it's been, it's been a shift. Well, I think we need paper.
If you pull it, you'd have to do temporary appropriations until the bid takes effect. That could be three months. It's up right now. The contract's up.
The contract is up right now. Could, how can you do it? Temporary, okay.
So it's an as-need?
The contract's up.
Opportunity to see if Staples or somebody around here can come in at a better price. That's local.
Not our local staples that was coming from their warehouse, and they were higher than the current state contract at the time.
So who has a business in Jersey City, the first things they mentioned to that, they have no guarantee to get this, you know, state contract. Order to get the state contract, I think there's some processes involved. Not only that, once go in the try to bid, they have to pay some kind of fee to look at the computers so and so. You know, so they have most lot of courses involved, somewhere we can find a way to, you know what I'm saying?
All the bids are done on BidSync, which is a computer system. So there's, there's costs involved with bidding for them too as well, but we can, we can attempt to bid and see what happens.
To the community, because that's what our goal is, to try to have some opportunities for people.
For example, the local one, they weren't the ones that bid. Even though they're the ones that have paper in their store, that wasn't the bidder. The bidder was the national staples through their warehouses, but we can try it again, sure. Okay.
Your next one.
Okay, the next one is. We'll withdraw it and I'll do the temporary amount and work on the bid. Okay. Sixteen is.
Needed. Is that how that's going to happen?
It works as needed now. As people request paper, that's when we do it, but we'll do it existing.
Effort to do try, okay?
The final extension on the moving company that we did bid a couple of years ago. Nelson Westerboro was the low bid by a lot, surprisingly, even though they're from Somerville. And we have one more year left on their contract, so we'll be bidding that in the following year, hopefully to get a local mover. None of the local movers bid last time. They were all eligible. We went out and called them all. They all refused to bid. Penza, which is borderline Union City, he was much too high, so he didn't compete either.
Benders.
To tell them that a bid is coming out.
Yes, but they refuse. Do they, do you know why they refuse?
They don't know how.
No, let me ask you this. This is the very important part now. Lot of different reason can be, they refuse to bid, you know what I'm saying? So as this administration and this council, we got to move our little more effort there, why they refuse. It's their, their, their business is open to make business, but now why they refuse? So we got to find out the why, what's the reason they refuse to bid? We got to add the reason and the plan. We got to come some kind of create a solution to them, you know what I'm saying?
That's what the Office of Inclusion is supposed to be doing.
Penza, which we used to have for years, was large enough. They just charged more.
Councilman Dine, he mentioned to that. That's who's the job is there?
The Office of Inclusion. Trying to get every local vendor and show them the process. Wait a minute, Michael, wait a minute. So do you contact the Office of Inclusion when you get a lot of referral, I mean, rejects? Like they don't want to do it? How will they know? What do you do to let them know that you having an issue with? This is a couple of years, okay.
It's going on the third year. For the new contract coming up, which we can start very quickly because this, you know, this is a one-year and it goes quick. We can certainly do the Office of Inclusion. Okay, sure.
So that you can get the information?
When we have to eliminate the furniture, like at One Journal Square, to clean out the stuff that's there and leave it empty. For that, we asked all the local moving companies to come in. They ordered a walkthrough with me to see if they would come in, take the stuff down, what they would charge. Nobody was interested. So, you know, that we did try last year.
Joe, Joe. Take your Clerk Street for me, right?
Yes.
All right, Joe. Okay, so I'm going to start with Z one, ten Z one.
For the Local Aid Infrastructure Fund discretionary aid for the Ocean Avenue resurfacing project.
So, so the DOT each year allows us to apply off-cycle. Their typical cycle right now is submission by October for the annual cycle for local aid, grant money for roads and signals and other infrastructure. When former awards finish up and there's money left over, they put it together in a pool, and they allow us to go back for discretionary aid. And being that Ocean Avenue was on the 2015 Local Aid Award, there wasn't enough to do Ocean Avenue because Ocean Avenue really, per my assessment, needs to be done from merit down to grant, the whole, the whole length. So this is the first step in going for some money. We've also, I've also worked with our BA, Mr. Kackaleski, to try to put in some money in the capital fund as well, to try to back up this award. We have a pretty good feeling that we will get some money. I don't know how much, but we don't know until we put it in. So I'm asking for your permission to apply for this grant.
About grants so that the council can be aware of the meeting that I attended, that Kabeely Research. You're going to do certain portions of MLK and Union and Atlantic and Oak, and that's all from a grant that is not taxpayer dollars. Have you ever presented that to the council? I mean, I know I saw that, but doesn't that need to get presented to the council?
We previously accepted that grant, but it's mostly administered, about ninety-five percent administered by the NJTPA, North Jersey Transportation Planning Agency. The community meeting was part of our involvement, as well as our continuous meetings in the office to make sure that we get the design correct.
I think you need to make a statement to the council from time to time because they don't know that there are grants out there and somebody else is doing things to different areas. Do you understand?
Yes, yes.
Only reason I know is because it was in my area, this one in particular, there's going to be one at Journal Square or McGinley Square or something like that, and I don't think the council members know that these projects are coming in their area, and I know because I'm, I was at the meeting.
Through the BA, Joe Coon and I may agree with the North Jersey Transportation Planner Authority, which they agreed to. There will be a community outreach for every one of those.
Different areas.
In those different areas where they occur. And good news, since you brought that up, BA gave us approval this morning to even seek some additional funding with the North Jersey Transportation Agency to supplement the Ocean Avenue.
Well, that's very nice. So see, from time to time, I think you guys need to, when you do your presentation or whatever, you need to say, and also, you know, and let them know there's some coming to Central Avenue or some coming to Journal Square. Councilman Borghiano should know that you have reached out and sought things for that area, okay?
Typically, we don't hear back for about five months or so, but in this case, I believe it's going to be a little bit more accelerated. They want to get back to us before the new cycle starts, which would be in October or so. I don't think we're going to make this year on Ocean Avenue, frankly speaking. It's. Yeah, no, but we're definitely aiming for next year, and with the help of these grants, we'll definitely know by then about this grant. We already are, as Mr. Tayati explained, working towards recouping some funds, or actually re-appropriating funds from the NJTPA, as well as the capital monies which have come through, all hopefully on time to get it done for maybe mid to late next year is more like the timeline. Yes, sir. Structured it and working with the BA again. There is enough on the ask for the capital budget to cover the majority, if not all, of what we're looking for. But whatever we get in grants will be kept for us, and we can reappropriate later or not use at all. Okay, I think, yes, sir, councilman.
You know, I hate to say it, they ask a certain issue in the my district, and you know, we have to discuss citywide issue, but this is a very urgent issue that Sanford Place, Sanford Place between Summit and Kennedy Bluebird, they are very high seats, but a high enough up of the street, Sanford Place, probably you know. Yes, so, so where is it from the Summit to Kennedy Bluebird? Their street never paint, almost thirty years ago, you know what I'm saying? So that is urgent to require because, you know, one of the persons showing this morning, for my part, they're thirty years, never paid. But Congdonia Street, we only, it's like off-road, there one place that. And the Irving Street, Irving, Irving Street between Central and Kennedy Bluebird is another major issue. So now.
Could he send out, he can send out a list of what streets they're going to do, Michael. You know what I mean? And if they're not included, then you should speak to them.
It's not?
Even though this Ocean Avenue is a plane, as I said several times, you know, kitchen base curb piece, you know, kitchen base cast iron curb piece, actually, these kind of items belong to JSE anyway, you know?
About that. He is aware after our conversation, and also I spoke to Stanley, who first brought that up. And we will be talking to them about getting reimbursement on those items.
Very short street, so maybe considered printed at this.
Yeah, but those grants are designated, aren't they? Because when you have a grant, you, you applied for a particular thing, and you have to do that thing that you applied for. That money and scatter it. You have to do what you applied for.
So it would be considered either applied for in the DOT, if it's a good candidate, or we put it on for the, if there is a capital, a capital program. But what was the limits of Irving between Central and? Okay, Z eight, okay, long awaited. Okay, Z eight, the. This is, I'm requesting that we get approval to award the first of four contracts for the long-awaited road program. You've been waiting, if you recall, I'll just briefly recap. We awarded to a contractor, everything to one contractor in 2015. That contractor since defaulted. We've since redesigned and rebid everything. So far, we did the first two contracts, which is the concrete portions, mainly ADA ramps. So that that's done, that must be done ahead of the paving. Next, what you will see will be us out to bid next month for the paving, the two paving contracts. Also broken up in the same way, north and south. This way, you have construction going on in both halves of the city, if you will, simultaneously. It is anticipated that if this award is made today for both the north and the south contracts, they will be on or about the week of June sixth. contracts, they will be on or about the week of June sixth starting. So, and we'll try to accelerate that as much as possible. But so far, we're on the timeline that I set forth, I think it was March, we worked together.
Now, because most of the work will be getting done when schools closed, which is nice.
As you all may know, the paving moves much quicker, so we need to build a head of steam here with the concrete contracts and get moving forward.
Two separate contracts, one side and one side of the street, right?
Well, right now, what we're looking at is two separate contracts, one for north, north wards, one for south wards, two different contractors. What occurred and what caused a slight delay, but we're not off of the start schedule, the low bidder for both was the same contractor. But we told them very clearly in the contract, if you cannot do both, you cannot accept both contracts. So he graciously decided to withdraw his bid. He chose the north. Granada Construction will be working in your ward, Councilman Bogianos, and also Councilwoman Osbornes, and Power Concrete will be taking care of the work in the AF and.
We do that, they put out a bid last year. Was the debt price and this price compared to price, how much is different?
I could take a look at that, I don't know that answer right now. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Company that has caused a problem, they total what they amount ask, and this one, so we can compare with that, okay?
Probably better to compare with the two moving contracts, too.
Actually, we.
They needed to afford them together to compare to the old one.
We've actually added a pretty significant amount of, of work. We've added a significant amount of work, we've added some streets, as you know.
You take up a couple of street from the Mye district, where do you increase, increase? No, 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 no. You know, you know what I'm saying? Actually, you, you from the Mye district.
Just get a comparison, that's all.
If you just say increase, I'd like to know which district you increase, being time you reduce my street. Or I'm going to make prepare the grill with very hard.
I'm just saying. So, we need to stop going back and forth as award with this, really.
The bids next, I had it too in your district, very big, the, the third and fourth largest in the whole program. Okay. I'll, I'll get back to you on that. That's all I have. Absolutely. Clerk Street speed humps, make it lit, to make it look like Arlington. Make it look like Ar- like Arlington. Okay, urgent.
So, okay. Yep, yep. Yeah, he did, he spoke about. Pay attention. All right, the, we have very little to do in first reading ordinances. B, three B, councilmen don't leave, this is an ordinance amending Chapter sixty-nine, special improvement districts, Article two, Central Avenue Special Improvement District.
Of what, which one?
Central Avenue Special Improvement District.
Oh, yeah, 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 good. Yes, very good.
Okay, go on to H, we did the others. A, an amendment to the city's lease with Journal Square Plaza Urban Renewal Associates for One Journal Square to amend the term. You have a late item, three I, City Ordinance sixteen zero ninety-nine. And that's an ordinance authorized in the city to convey all city-owned lots within the property known as Berry Lane Park to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency, subject to the eventual reversion of the property for dedication as a city park. Nope. All right. Questions? We're going to do the McGinley Square, Sid. That'll be three down and two more to go, thank God. Going to go right to resolutions, councilmembers. A is an emergency temporary appropriation. We did B with Donna Mauer. C is urging the state legislature to enact an amendment to the appointment, removal and salary for aides for council members statute.
We want to actually switch the language, change it a little bit. Michael, tell you. Just tweak it.
All right, D is consenting to the award of the public infrastructure tax credit from the New Jersey Economic Development Authority to Bayview Redevelopment LLC. E is authorizing an estimated third quarter 2016 tax bill if needed. F is the cancellation of charges in the Jackson Hill Special Improvement District for property identified as eighteen Seedler Street. G and H are the approval of the budget and the assessment role of the McGinley Square Special Improvement District. I, we're introducing the Journal Square Special Improvement District. J, K and L are all resolutions honoring or recognizing people, Garthelia and Teague of the Love, Hope and Charity Club, Inc., and a resolution honoring Dorothy Wojcik on the occasion of her retirement. She has a heavy heart today. Her sister Barbara Bermersky was buried today. L, Beautiful Mass at St. Anthony's Church. L honoring the award recipients of the Sixth Annual Dinner of the Morris Canal Redevelopment, Morris Canal Development Corporation. M, authorizing the settlement of the lawsuit of Semay Jurges versus the City of Jersey City. N and O authorize the closure of streets.
O, ten O.
Let me get to N. Montgomery Street from Miranda Grove for the Bike Jersey City Ward Tour. O is closing Exchange Place on the number of Fridays for the Feminist Volts.
Yes.
At the request of the JC families.
Okay, we understand that they, but are you okay?
Ten O.
I was, I was back on ten C.
On the Feminist Volts? Yeah, Feminist Volts, that they are ten.
Yeah.
They're going to use every Friday, almost one, two, three, four, five. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Good, as long as you're okay, fine, okay. But is that the other organization to use that they're one organization, use almost every Friday, five times, almost five?
I, I'm completely okay with it. They, I'm, it's.
Don't be a chevindist. A chevindist.
It, they're, they're all different, so the, the theme of them is all different, they retract different.
He. Is amending a resolution authorizing the administrative executed discharge of mortgage affecting two oh six York Street. Q is a resolution determining if the proposed sponsor meets or will meet an existing housing need for a housing project known as Ocean Bayview one and Ocean Bayview two. R through W, we're done with Carmen Gandula. X and Y and Z were done earlier, as was Z one. Z two is authorizing an agreement with Union County to permit the Jersey City Police Recruits to attend the Union County John H's Dammeler Police Academy.
But, Z two, why they ask more than the other place? They usually, we pay nine hundred dollars to.
Z three, the license agreement with BR Hillcorn Equities, the owner of a parking lot at eighty-one ninety-five Cornelissen Avenue.
This one.
Permitting city employees to park.
This is for the Health and Human Services.
Right, this, the former lot was sold, the new owner doubled the rent, doubled the lease on us. We found this lot two blocks away, they honored the original monthly fee we were charging, so we changed the lots.
That's far to the Caneasen.
It's right down the hill.
Probably me.
It's just down, think about where Health and Human Services, if you walk down the hill, right.
Speak for yourself, councilman.
It's down.
It'd be good for them.
No, it's not, no, it's not that far. It's not, it's not that far. Right, it's not that far.
All right, Z four, remediation and access agreement for the NJDEP Chrome Site two oh five, buy-in between DA Condominium Association, Inc., the City of Jersey City and Honeywell International.
Yeah, I know.
The dog run.
Z five is authorizing the execution of a master avid pay trust jointer agreement with Old North State Trust LLC.
Earlier this year, the council approved a company to manage our PSC and G bills, and they're going to pay our bills for us. This resolution is that mechanism for us to put the money into this third party, so the contracted vendor can then pay PSC and G for us. It's just an administrative cleanup. Yes, sir.
This company started jobs last year, two thousand fifteen, right? Yeah, two thousand fifteen, we proved the July fifteen, the last resolution. So now, since this company took over, you know, so almost one used it, they saved some dollars for us?
I'll have to get a report from you on that. I know there's been some, there's been a bit of hiccup, you know, Mr. Miller had an accident and he was out of work for several months, so transferring the data to them took a little slower than we had hoped.
Their price, their problems, their company, they charged that there's some kind of a fee, bonus fee based on saving, not this one, not this company.
Funnel the money through this company so they can pay the bills for us. There's no money involved in this contract.
Okay, moving on to Z six, resolution ratifying a contract award to Royal Printing Service for printing official election machine and sample ballots for the primary election. Z seven, we did earlier with Ms. Flanagan. Z eight, Z nine were done earlier. Z ten, the renewal of a contract with RFP Depot, doing business as Bid Sync. We alluded to that earlier, that they provide online bidding and quote services for the division of purchasing. Z eleven was done earlier. Z twelve, an annual event with Robert Santilli Consulting for providing maintenance and support services for the police department's existing software applications created by Robert Santilli Consulting. Z thirteen, an award of contract with, to VE Ralph and Sons Incorporated for purchase and delivering of medical supplies for the Office of Emergency Management. Fourteen, Motorola for portable radio equipment and accessories for emergency management, funded through the UASI grant. Fifteen has been withdrawn, we did sixteen through nineteen. Twenty, a contract with Millennium Strategies LLC for grant services. Z twenty-one, professional services agreement with Brack Eichler LLC to represent police officers Thomas Johnson and Clyde Banks in the matter of Francis DeFazio and Shazia DeFazio versus the City of Jersey City.
You'll note this is the case that we just won at trial. This is just an extension of that contract, because in the middle of that trial, we had to do a renewal, and so we're doing it now, and it's just a fund through to the, to what that trial cost. I also further add, because we were victorious in that litigation, we will be pursuing our attorney's fees, and we feel hopeful that we'll get reimbursed all of the money that we spent on that trial.
We talked about Z twenty-two earlier. Z twenty-three is a memorandum of agreement between the city and merchandise drivers Local six forty-one affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, chauffeurs, warehousemen and helpers of America.
What is this one? Can you explain it a little bit more?
Yeah, so this is just the group that you want. I mean, this is a.
This is only a.
Yeah, a couple of meetings ago, this is the, the agreement the city entered into with the Teamsters of the former JCIA, that are now city employees and members of DPW. The council, you know, we withdrew this a couple of meetings ago, now we're putting it back on before council, so the employees down there, you know, have some, you know, right, you know, the, the Teamsters worked in, you know, cooperation with us and negotiating an agreement. There's a lot of confusion amongst the employees down there, who's represented, it's leading to a lot of little problems. Local two forty-five has, has taken some action against the city, you know, there's like the three pending actions that we're going to perk on, and one action that was taken in federal court. So, you know, we're just, we're just trying to really to eliminate the, the confusion, so the employees know where they stand, whether it's temporary or not. Perk will make the final decision at some point.
The simple, the simple answer is, the employees, when we were doing the dissolution, we all, including all of us sitting here, committed that we would make the transition as seamless and painless for the rank and file employees as possible. They've asked for us to continue with the Teamsters, so we've continued with the Teamsters. That's what that is.
Question, why do we have to have two unions? In other words, if the employee, does all the employees want Teamsters?
No, the employees that were represented by the Teamsters want to continue being represented by the Teamsters. They've continued to be represented.
They want to stay here.
Well, they, who knows when they end up on the road, but that's, but that's for them to figure out.
But the other guys, they want their union, we having a problem with this here.
We'll get, we'll get.
It's ridiculous. This is ridiculous, okay.
But the reality is, it's, it's actually no different, it's not a problem for us as an administration and a management at all. We deal with whoever, we deal with multiple unions all the time. There's no one union in the city, there's many, many. Yeah, so it's not.
Nine existing.
Yeah, so it's, it's no, it's not an issue for us.
Agenda provided to the council earlier in the meeting. Z twenty-four is a discharge of mortgage at five ninety-two Ocean Avenue. Z twenty-five, we accepting a gift from Sims Metal Management for metal leechers. Z twenty-six is a cooperative agreement with the JCRNA to manage vacant lots. This is the adopt a lot program. And Z twenty-seven is a license agreement with the JCRNA to operate Berry Lane Park. So that would be it.
Parks, I'm glad corporate council is here. I've been getting telephone calls from vendors asking, how can they put their, their pizza place or hot dog stand or whatever in that? I've been sending them to JCRNA because I didn't know who else to send them to.
I've been working with Director Williamson, and we're putting together an RFP for the parks, I'm going to do the pools for the summer, and we're going to do Berry Lane, Cave and Point Field, and Persian Field, I'm going to have concessions RFP, so give an opportunity for people to bid on putting their businesses in. Yes, yes, so we're working on that.
All right, is that where I have to send them?
Yeah, they're not ready for yet, but, send them to me.
Their park, new parking lot and the Health and Human Services?
Yes, sir.
Actually, we all know that their parking are located actually not designed in this area, so it's safety in our city employees, okay?
We have a motion by. Councilperson Coleman, seconded by councilperson Osborne, to adjourn at seven oh three. By acclamation, council president absent. Good night, everyone.